You ready? Okay, quiet down, please. I'd like to call the June 16, 2015 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order, please. Could I have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Slavin is present. Mr. Tropeano, Mrs. Whiteside, Mr. Titlebaum, Town Administrator Sullivan and Town Council is also present.
All right, can we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please? And could Mr. Ferrante lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Come right down here, Mr. Ferrante.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, announcements, Mr. Titlebaum.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Titlebaum.
Apparently she wants to be me. I just, I have one here. On July 18, 2015, at the Gleason YMCA in Wareham, Mayhem for a Cause Wrestling Event.
Okay.
Large sweaty man, Whiteside is horrified. Doors open at 6 o'clock, the main event begins at 7:00. This will feature our own celebrity wrestler, Chip DeBois of the Fire Department, who was a rather large individual. Tickets are $15. You can go on YMCASouthCoast.org for more information. And you can also contact me if you'd like to become a corporate sponsor or individual sponsor for this event.
All right, Mr. Slavin, please. No, Mrs. Whiteside.
Thank you. I have some more erudite announcements. The Wareham Historical Society's 39th Annual Antique and Craft Fair is Saturday, July 4th, 8 to 2 p.m. on the Village Green Center Park Main Street. Crafts Fair at the Congregational Church Hall, there's a $3 admission, which includes a tour of the Fearing Tavern Museum. The Wareham Minutemen and Militia will muster at noon. Frank McNemmy, Macnemy, will be giving the appraisals, and he's, I gotta tell you, he's really good. One item for $5, three for $10, and that's from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Information, call Angie Dunham or email her. You can ride the rails with the Wareham Firemen's Association, and they won't be sweaty and in their underwear. They will be departing from the Buzzards Bay Train Station, crossing the world famous railroad bridge over the Cape Cod Canal, Friday, July 24, 2015. Approximately 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., boarding at 5:00 p.m. at the Buzzards Bay Train Station down by the bridge. There is unfortunately no wheelchair access available. Regular seating is $24 for an adult, $12 for under 12, and if you're under 5, you go for free. The upper level dome car costs $28 for adult, and it's adults only for children's safety. Light refreshments will be available during the train trip, beverages, adult. Beer and wine will be available for purchase onboard the train. For tickets or information, please contact Melissa Bourne, 295-6534, Claire Maxim, 295-5821, Karen Baker, 508-954-4107. The upper level dome is limited to the first 24 adults who reserve the seats, and actually that's the best way to see the sights on the canal. Remind you all that this Saturday, starting at 3:00 p.m., the Relay for Life will be occurring at the Newt Anderson Track. I urge you all to attend. Why we have the purple ribbons here, and they've been all over town? It's a fight to end cancer. The library's new hours, starting July 6. Spinney Memorial in Onset will be open Monday and Wednesday from 9 to 2. That's Monday and Wednesday, 9 to 2 at Spinney. The Main Library will be open Tuesday and Thursday from 10 to 7, and Saturday from 9 to 2. Main Library, Tuesday and Thursday, 10 to 7, and Saturday, 9 to 2. Also on the 20th, the Joey Vasconcellos Seventh Memorial Softball Game is going to be held. Again, it's to support a good cause. And it's part of our announcements, it's coming up later on the agenda, but I just want to remind people that signs like this, which of course you can't read from there, are not allowed. Signs on your own property are one thing, but on town or other property, uh-uh.
Okay, I have no announcements, so we're gonna move on to citizens' participation.
Yes, Peter has.
Oh, Peter, you've come up with one?
Yes.
All right, you may return.
Just one more. The summer schedule for the Board of Selectmen through July was just issued today. We will be meeting on June 23 next week, taking a week off. July 7 we will be meeting, July 14 and July 28. So again, June 23, July 7, July 14, July 28. I just wanted to get that out there, especially for Mr. Barrows.
Yeah, we were gonna have a meeting on the 30th, which would've fallen in our schedule, but we will have too many members on vacation that week, so. All right, so next, all right, we need to be quiet, please. All right, next up is citizens' participation. Is there anybody here to speak to us this evening? Come on down. State your name for the record, if you would.
Hi.
Pull it right up to you.
Yep. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, really close.
Really close.
Yes, really close.
Hi, I'm Jackie Lindsay, Chairman of the Wareham Fireworks Committee.
And I'm Maria Oliva with the Cape Cod Canal Legion Chamber of Commerce.
I think a few of you missed our event at the Mezzaluna. We'd like to take this time to thank E.J. Kobellis for his generosity. This is the fifth year. He has put on the entire venue, all the wonderful hors d'oeuvres, and we had some fabulous prizes. We also would like to thank our, we have some sponsors, oh, we had some great auction items, I think Alan saw them. We had Red Sox tickets, that Seats 1 and 2 with VIP parking. We had a getaway at White, for a weekend at White Horse Beach. We had Amachigal Limited Print, that Susan Ricky Sowen had donated, it was number 30 out of 500. And then we had Lynn Chocolate's provided truffles to all our guests that evening. And I'd like to thank the, our sponsors, which was basically E.J. We raised $5,569 that one evening, thanks to the generosity of many of the businesses that donated. We had Soco as a sponsor, we have Highline onboard, A.D. Makepeace, of course, always helps us, Cape Cod Five, and then all the businesses, Atlantic Boats, Sears, Home Depot, Highline, Bay Point Country Club, Buzzards Bay Dive Shop, the In and Onset Bay, Liberty Liquors in Born, Browns Liquor in Wareham, Go Bananas, Bruce Jensen donated his photography. And then we had nine historical photographs from Jack Conway office that used to be on Cranberry Highway, and we still have a few left that you might be interested in. And so we really just wanted to take time out to thank everybody that did support us, and hope you will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just here to reiterate what Jackie was saying, that on behalf of the Chamber, we've been involved with the Wareham Fireworks Committee. We want to thank all the groups, all the volunteers. Without the volunteers, this can't happen. We appreciate the town's support, appreciate your support. And we know what an economic boost it is to the area to have the fireworks, and we're trying to get money raised every single year, and it is a challenge, but there's special people who volunteer to make it happen for the town. So we thank you for your support, and we look forward to another year of fireworks, and hope they continue for a long time to come. It does make a big difference for the quality of life in Wareham and Onset, but also for the economy and for residents. And we do have a lot of residential support as well, from the businesses too, so we have to say that the revenue comes from everywhere around the region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else to speak to us this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Okay, we're gonna take one thing out of order, because there's a little show and tell, and we're gonna take the Veterans Council, which is 8A on your agenda, because they have a little show and tell, so we're gonna do that first.
So we're gonna have Christian Fernandez and Jim Bruce.
Jim Bruce.
Step forward, please.
Come on down.
And somebody in the back?
We need to shut off at least half the lights when they're ready.
Can you shut the door too, please? Because all this nice, cool air is disappearing. Thank you so much. No?
No, you can turn that one off.
Turn them?
Yeah, thank you. That's good, thanks. Hello, Mr. Bruce.
Can you turn the other one off too?
Good evening to you.
Are you gonna read, or are we gonna?
I didn't know if Christian was going to go before I, or...
Which way do you want to do it?
I'm happy to speak first.
Computer's still loading, so, I mean, he can talk while it's loading.
I would like to say that we had, this was just marvelous. You know that expression, "Don't judge your life by the number of breaths you take, but by the many things that take your breath away." And this, this was a very special day, I was so proud. And I just have to thank the entire community, as always, in this wonderful time, town of mine, for their incredible support. Literally dozens and dozens of people, many of whom will go unnamed, and I'm really going to be brief, by the way. It was a very special day. I was in charge of the weather, I will take credit for that. But the nine locations that we visited were very special, and I just want to say thanks to this little list of people who were supported by so many others. Jessica Andrews, not certainly, first and foremost, but so special, two busloads of children from the 6th and 7th grade, who showed up and placed all of the flags in their respective, if I may take a liberty, 13 to 1400 locations. They previously, of course, having been taken down by people like Judith Whiteside and John Ferrante, and a whole bunch of people who just worked their butts off for days and days and days. The municipal maintenance department did an absolutely wonderful job. The nine locations, the cemeteries, of course, in particular, were meticulously cared for. It meant so much. Many, many people spoke about it. Enough can't be said for their diligence and their hard work. We have a member of our council, as a member, a member of the Junior ROTC, Tyler Litchfield and his dad. Tyler, of course, championed the color guard, they did a swell job. The American Legion, the VFW, participated, if you will, together on behalf of our rifle group. Whether you know it or not, there are 40 or 50 locations of bridges in stones and rocks and plaques that had old decrepit flags taken out and placed in locations appropriately. Some of these bridge things are not the most fun place to be. Our police department, I spoke with the Chief Walsh, and they were right there when they needed to be, and some of the more precarious locations, like the center of Onset, are on the bridge down there at the Narrows and what have you, it's just so appreciated. We really appreciated Alan's participation in walking with us and helping us with our flag, with our flag, wreath placements, forgive me, as well. And Irene did a lovely job with her wreaths. So nice to have Steve Baptiste as well, our candidate, our 2015 Veterans Day Grand Marshal. It was wonderful to have him with us. And several other fellows who will just go unnamed that fell in and helped. WCTV, Steve Ruiz and his son. What a wonderful job to grace us now with the ability to watch this and make improvements for next year. John Ferrante and Skip Sarnelli, who I didn't mention earlier. The council members are going without, without mention. Every pitched, everyone pitched in and did a marvelous job. Alisee Giannelli, our bugler, and her mom even participated, so that we had a medic running around with us during the whole bloody thing, so that was, that was pretty darn cute. I certainly have missed some names, and there are many. And again, I make note of the count of the flags. 13 of 1400, taken down, removed, and these guys worked so hard using the town's maps, I think is the appropriate term, trying to appropriately locate the veterans, fallen as they were. And I know next year, there will be more. I think there are hundreds more that need to be appropriately taken care of. And last but not least, I, I want and always want to appreciate Bob White's organizational skills, go without mention. He is just terrific, and without him, quite frankly, it would not have been as successful as it was. So thank you all, and the many folks that followed us through the event that day too, it was really very lovely. Chris?
Do you want the lights out, Christian?
Can you see it?
Yeah.
Well, today is, of course, the 4th, and it's the celebration of Memorial Day, previously Decoration Day, started back in 1868 with one, General John Logan. And it really is all seated in the Civil War, but going forward, of course, it was changed into Memorial Day. And after a week of a bunch of folks checking all the markers in the local cemeteries, both the St. Patrick's and Center, as well as Agawang, and Long Neck down in Onset, today we were blessed with having, I think, plus or minus 76 and 7th graders. Jessica Andrews is a teacher herself, that has been doing this for 10 or 12 years. And we've all come to all of these locations to now place flags in the markers, of course, for Monday, which is when Memorial Day will be celebrated, and it went just wonderfully in a matter of a couple to three hours. This gang has placed all of these flags here, it's absolutely beautiful. It's a beautiful morning, and all of us veterans couldn't be more thankful for, for their participation, and I think it's extremely important for the younger generations to learn what Memorial Day is about. It's a solemn occasion. In memory of those veterans, those men and women who fought for this country in the Civil War, the Spanish-American War, and Korea, and World War I, World War II, and Vietnam, and a couple of others, quite frankly. So this is a beautiful, beautiful day, and I know there are thousands of veterans who are thankful for this participation, as we of the Veterans Council are here today. I'm Jim Bruce, and I can begin to tell you how appreciative all the veterans, with the council specifically, but around town, will be on Monday. Let me see what a marvelous job you've done and how hard you've worked, and again, from the bottom of my heart, thank you all very, very much, your first performance. And I do want to say that, I'm sure you all know why we're here today, and a lot of people don't know, but the Veterans Day, which was first called Decoration Day in 1868 by one John Logan, who was a general that really is born at the feet of the Civil War, and a lot of folks don't know that, but it is a solemn occasion, of course. So have fun, but be careful. And indeed remember that we're here today to honor those that died in battle, whereas Veterans Day, of course, is about veterans that are alive and so on and so forth. Today, today is, is a solemn period, remembering the thousands of men and women that fought for this country, whether it be the Civil War, the Spanish-American War, Korea, Vietnam, World War I, World War II, and they appreciate it too, I can assure you that they're watching. Today, when you're going around, a lot of fellows and gals worked for the last week or so, putting and brightening up and putting new markers, and what we care about is veterans' markers. And if God bless the police and the fire department, you might see some of those, and by mistake, if you place a bad flag here, it's fine. But today, again, is about veterans, so if you're looking, Paul is holding one of the markers for now.
My name's Paul Gable Weatherman, I'm a Vietnam veteran, just like Mr. Bruce is here. This is the Vietnam marker, it's a plastic medallion. You see the loops here? That's what you're looking for. There's ones for Korea, World War I, World War II, the Civil War, which is G-A-R. We all spent a whole week and a half replacing all the damaged ones, the best we could. They all have loops back here, okay? The holes here stick in the bottom two loops, okay? They're all already in the ground. That's what you're looking for. You want to identify these markers, okay? And what your job is going to be, is to put the flags in these top two loops, okay? When you have a flag, that's not gonna get in there, because they're not all uniformly manufactured.
Well, they're not pointed at all, they're...
Yeah, they're not pointed. We just did this because we were doing this into, into the wreaths yesterday on the bridges, but yours will be an even cut on the, on the bottom. I don't have one, I have one, but you may have trouble, all right? We have some knives, we whittle them and get them in for you. Don't try to force them in, you'll crack the marker.
Paul, Paul, and I'm letting you interrupt. I need to talk with this other group.
All right.
So Paul will dispatch you, a couple of you at a time. I do want to say, be safe. You're all adults, you don't want anybody to get hurt as well as lost or otherwise, so I'll see if I can really thank you from the bottom of my heart. Paul will continue with what he has to say.
Take your time, it's not a race, okay? We're not, all right? It's not a race. All right. Be respectful of all the grades here, all right? And most of the, the easiest ones to identify will be on a big headstone, and they're all on the right side of the headstone, usually, okay? That's what we try to put up. There'll be some flat stones in there, there's some mark, small markers there. I'll help you identify. If you have any questions, raise your hand, they'll come over and help you.
Ladies and gentlemen, what do we say?
Well, you're just wonderful. I can't believe how quickly this just got done.
What does being out here putting flags for the veterans mean to you?
I feel like we're showing respect for the people who serve our country. Like, they, they honestly enjoyed us a lot. They fought for our freedom, and they died for our freedom, and that's honestly amazing.
And because of them, we have like the rights to wear t-shirts and like, like play outside, like not be dictated.
Is this in your first year?
Um, it's my first year doing this, yes.
We found you have the opportunity to do it next year, would you do it again?
Yeah, I'd be excited.
Just thought to thank you all for having us, coming up and doing this. You've all done very well, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome. Yeah.
Good for them.
How many dismissed?
Very nice, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna go to appointments now? If you could run us through those, it'd be wonderful, Ms. Whiteside.
Yes, I can. I actually have a list of all reappointments that I would like to read.
Yeah, let's go for it.
Okay. These are reappointments. Kat Jones, 18 Woburn Avenue, Onset, Mass. And Jean Connaughton, 185 Great Neck Road, both to the Community and Economic Development Authority, to a term to expire no later than 6/30/18.
Second. Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, it's 4-0-0.
Alyssa Hurd, 20, Elizabeth Lane, Wareham, Mass. To, to an associate member to the Conservation Commission, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2016.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Robert Short, to Foundry Circle, West Wareham, as a constable for the town of Wareham, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2016.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Gregory Kamen, 11 Briarwood Lane, Rochester, Mass. And Karen Blair, Post Office Box 292, Middleborough, Mass. Both as constables for the, for a term to expire no later than 6/30/15, 2015.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Denise Valenti, 69, Swift's Beach Road, to the Historic District Commission, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2018. Please turn your phones off.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Titlebaum, seconded by Mr., I mean, excuse me. Motion by, by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Angela Dunham, 40, Oak Street, to, member of the Historical Commission, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2018.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Jennifer Gady, 5, Twins Beach Lane, Wareham, to the Recycling Committee, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2018.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Charlene Price, 32 Standish Avenue, East Wareham, where, to the Recycling Committee, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2018.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, 4-0-0.
Mary Nyman, 79, Green Gate Lane, Wareham, as a member of the Wareham Cultural Council, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2017.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
I may mispronounce this, Ellen Yuji, 44 Edgewater Way, Wareham, as a member of the Wareham Cultural Council, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2017.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Paul Schicattelli, 28 Cedar Street, Wareham, as a member of the Wareham Cultural Council, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2017.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
And Nazi El Kalasi, 20 Tower Terrace, Wareham, Mass. A, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2020.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
I now have new appointments?
Yep.
Okay. The first one I have is for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Jan Kendrick, I move that she be appointed to a term to expire no later than June 8, June 30, 2018.
Full-time member, right?
Full-time, yes, as a full-time member.
Okay. Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
Carl S. Baptiste, Senior, Tuant Hannah's Lane, to, as a member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2016.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Timothy Lyden, 24 Dyna's Way, Wareham, Mass. To an associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, to a term to expire no later than June 30, 2016.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
And we have the Historical Commission. I move that Johanna Raleigh of 2229 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, be appointed as a member of the Historical Commission to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2018.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
And now we have the Old Colony Elderly Services Board of Directors, Pamela Dudley, 3132 Cranberry Highway, number 58, East Wareham, as a member to the Old Colony Elderly Services Board of Directors to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2016.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
Done.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, good. All right, next up is a request for a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license from Charles Fellows.
And we have-
Actually, somebody's subbing in for him, actually.
Matt, somebody?
With Matt, right?
Yes, Matt Schaffer.
Okay, Matt, come on down and give us your synopsis and-
Can you spell your last name for the record, please?
Matt Schaffer, S-H-A-F-F-E-R.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I am here on behalf of La France Hospitality and the Rosebrook Event Center in Wareham, requesting a one-day liquor license for an off-site catering project on Saturday, July 25th, 2015.
Okay. Ms. Whiteside?
Yes, all of the paperwork is in order.
Okay.
So I move that Charles Fellows of 25 Amy's Way, Westport, Mass., be granted a special license, all alcoholic beverages, for July 25th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Premises of Box Mill Hall, Tyoneet Road, Wareham.
Okay, do I ever second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
You'll be able to pick that-
Thank you.
-paperwork up tomorrow.
Next up is a request for four one-day wine and malt licenses from Buzzards Play Productions. Come on down.
I think we should put him at the end of the agenda.
Yeah. It's not that hard.
Like, maybe next week sometime? How are you?
I'm all right. How are you tonight? All right, so this is sort of a regular thing with you, so we'll just go ahead, okay? Okay. So we have two music events, and I believe the other two are comedy. Okay.
That, actually, you have, yes, that's correct.
You have four.
You had, you had four and you had a comedy.
Yes.
Before, so it's music, music, comedy, comedy, yep.
There's five events?
There was one that we did.
There was.
We did.
We did one the other day.
Yeah, okay. So I move that Buzzards Bay Productions, Inc. of 3065 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, be granted a special one-day license for beer and wine on the following days, June 27th, 2015, June 28th, 2015, July 11th, 2015, August 15th, 2015. The hours will be from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m. And it's wines and malt beverages. So I moved that.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0. That's it? Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Next up, Dudley Brown, Post 2846 VFW, request for two licenses. You'll just have to do this one, they're not here.
No one here?
No.
Okay. Then there are two dates.
This is in there for their outside.
Yes, this is, yeah. This is for the Dudley L. Brown Post 2846 VFW for Gibbs Ball Park Road, Onset, Mass., for June 21st, 2015, from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and June 28th, 2015, from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. This is to be held in the Onset VFW Pavilion, and no alcoholic beverages are to be consumed on town property.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0. All right, next up is a request from onset Bay Association to place lawn stakes signs on town property.
Good evening.
Good evening, and how are you?
Kat Jones from the onset Bay Association. I run a project called the onset Summer of Love Music Series. Some of you might be familiar with it. I have 12, I thought I'd bring an example, 12 double-sided lawn stake signs I have previously put out on town property. I would like, again, to do that this year. I'd like to start putting them out tomorrow. The concerts start two weeks from tomorrow. I'd like to get the word out as soon as possible. I do have a concession to ask that I have, my project runs until August 19th. I would like to have my signs out for the duration of the project. Due to scheduling on my behalf and my coworkers, it's hard for me to come back here. I know you have a 30-day rule for your lawn stake signs. I'm wondering if you'll make an exception if I do have to come back. I will have to make special arrangements to do that. But again, my project goes until August 19th. I will be sure that every sign is removed on August 20th. Another thing is I have a banner I have yet to put up. I wanted to change the location of it. I had said I would put it up in onset. There's a spot on the corner of Depot Street and 6 and 28. There's two trees there right on the corner. I've hung a banner there in the past. I'd like to hang another one up there again. I'd also like to do that tomorrow and have that up for the duration of my project, which is August 19th.
Okay, Mr. Titlebaum, you have something?
I don't know that we would want to set a precedent of going beyond our 30 days. I don't know that we can, but I can assure you that this is such a benign request. I think that if we're replaced on a subsequent agenda, I don't see an issue with us voting on it a couple more times if that's what you'd need.
Sure.
Without having to come in and explain it, because you've already done that.
Right, and I don't want to have to see, you know, I don't want to see the signs disappear and then have to put them out again. You can understand, I think.
So perhaps, Mr. Chairman, we could just schedule when they can come back on an agenda?
I can. I'll, I'll-
We'll handle it that way.
I'll take it out 30 days and then put them back on.
Okay, great.
So, all right, I'll make the motion.
Also, could I just add, on behalf of the onset Bay Association, we do have other banners that will go out through the course of the summer for all our, for all of our events. Most of those banners do stay in, within the area of onset near the gazebo and the bandshell for a variety of events, you know, Fourth of July, illumination, street painting, Shakespeare on the Park, those kinds of things. We'd also, I guess I'd like to seek permission to put those banners out as well.
I think we can make, I think we can allow the onset Bay Association to place things for 30 days at a time and cover it that way.
Yeah, all the other events, you know, it's-
I don't think we need to know the specific events.
They're one-day events, you know, the banners wouldn't even be up for more than a week or, or so.
Did you just make a motion?
Okay.
I move to allow the onset Bay Association to place signs and banners for the onset Summer of Love Concert Series and other related and unrelated events for a period of 30 days.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0.
And it is a 30-day permit, and you will not have to come back in yourself, but it will be on the agenda again because our-
Okay.
We do have a 30-day. Sure. Thank you, sir.
Understood, thank you very much.
We'll do it again. We also need to make sure we send a note down to the Building Inspection Office.
Yes.
Please. The other thing is, I want to kind of talk a little bit about that for one second. There are a lot of signs out there. There are a lot of them. We're going to talk about this a little later on the agenda, that don't belong out there. There are only a certain amount of people that have permission to have them out there, and all the other signs do not belong there. So I can tell you right now that they're going to be removed very shortly. They're going to be out there taking them down. So if anybody knows or anybody wants to keep their signs, I suggest you go out and get them before we send somebody out to take them all down, because there is a lot of signs out there and a lot of commercial entities. All right, next up is request from Don't Trash Wareham.
Well, no, I thought you were going to do the other OBA, the Heinz field. Didn't you say you were going to do that all at the same time?
No, because that goes with the other-
Okay.
-request for the fireworks.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right, come on down. We'll do F and H together.
Good evening, I'm Nora Bickie from the Don't Trash Wareham Project, and tonight I'd like to ask permission to put two banners up over, one over Main Street near the fire station and one over Onset Avenue near Mark Anthony's, to run from July 12th to August 15th.
Okay.
That's 30 days, right? Yes.
Sounds a little extra.
Well, here's the issue, you have to get the fires, the fire department to put them up, and sometimes it takes a couple of days for them to find someone to put them up. So I will take, they will come down 30 days after they are put up.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Well, I'm not going to make a motion.
You want, you shouldn't make a motion. Move to permit Don't Trash Wareham to place signs on town property for 30 days.
Can you second it, please?
Second out of necessity, because they shouldn't be seconding.
All right, now, second out of necessity. All right, any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining.
Abstain.
2-0-2.
You're going to abstain? You can't, that's 2-2, it won't pass.
It's a 2-0-2.
2-0-2, it's fine.
2-0-2.
2-0-2 works. 2-0-2, yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine. Fine, you made it.
Thank you very much.
You made it through.
By the skin of your teeth.
It was good, it was close though.
Yeah.
Yeah, 2-0-2. All right, next up, hold on, let me get this out of my way here. All right, next up, we're going to take OBA back up for F and, F and H?
Fireworks.
Onset Bay for both, both of their issues. One is the fireworks and the other is the request for-
Heinz.
Heinz and Hammond School Fields. Hello?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. All right, so fill us in.
All right, Eleanor Martin from the onset Bay Association.
And Linda Hannan from the onset Bay Association.
The first one we have is the request for the use of Heinz Field and Hammond School. And before we get into that, I wanted to see if I could amend this application, because originally we had been told that Lopes Field was out of the picture for us to use for parking, but now, when we had the department head meetings, we were told that it wasn't, that we would be able, so I'd like to add Lopes Field along with Heinz Field.
It's on here. It says Heinz, Lopes and-
Oh, good, Jim, it's a good girl. So the, the thing that we want to do with both Lopes Field and Heinz Field is to use it for the Blues Festival and charge for parking. We've done this before. Last year we did it and we split with the town. Unfortunately, we were rained out and there wasn't much to split. So I'm just guessing that that would probably be the arrangement again this year. And the Hammond School Field is, we wanted to use it like we did last year to put the vendors parking in. That would be, we wouldn't be charging them, but it helps to have that area for the vendors to go over and park after they've unloaded their equipment.
Did you say you would not be charging them?
The vet, for parking over there? No.
Mr. Chair, if I had-
Go ahead, yep.
We already charged the vendors the fee, so having them inside of their, their, I would-
Okay, fine, so you're okay with this?
I'm okay.
You're okay with that agreement?
Correct, yes.
And the agreement is that-
Fifty percent of the parking.
Fifty percent of the, of the parking in those areas would be given to the town.
Heinz and Lopes Field.
Heinz and Lo, Heinz and Lopes Field.
Okay.
The date of August 1st.
Yes.
Motion.
From 9:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. And can I just ask, because I'm, I want it on the record, who's picking it up? The junk?
In the parking areas?
Yep.
We, we have volunteers. We've never really had much to pick up in the parking areas. People just park their cars and leave. So there really isn't, but we will police it to make sure that if there is trash, it gets picked up.
Thank you.
Otherwise, you're going to run into Keep Wareham Clean Committee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Also, if there's food in any of those bags, they really need to be taken away that day, not, you know, because the animals, the scavengers get into it. Thank you so much.
All right, so-
I made a motion, I think.
Yeah, please.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum.
I've got one question. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Just quickly, did I hear correctly that the Heinz Field is going to have the vendors parking there?
No.
Where?
Hammond. The vendors will be up at Hammond School.
Okay, so that's the only parking at the Hammond School will be the vendors?
Right.
Thank you. It wasn't clear.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, 4-0-0. All right, next up, we're going to take H, which is your fireworks.
Which is your fireworks.
Right.
For July 4th.
Request for use of town property.
And I'm still waiting for the police sign-off on that, so any motion that we make-
You can do two.
-is going to be subject to the sign-off from the police chief.
From the police chief?
Okay.
All right.
Could we hear from the town administrator, please?
On the fireworks?
Yes, please.
We've gone over it. We know that besides their excellent fundraising efforts, community events will cover the cost for the town personnel. While they may not have it now, we have till the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
We, there's a letter that should have been written from community events stating that they will cover those costs.
And you're okay with this?
I am.
Okay.
And I've looked at what we have projected for the revenues. Now, the only thing that could stymie that is if the legislation never acts on it and it dies on the vine. But we have faith in our legislators.
Okay, fine.
Okay, and Mr. Bruce has already certified that the weather will be fine, so I will make a motion...
Not yet. Okay, go ahead, make the motion, then we'll do it.
For the onset fireworks to be held July...
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Fourth, from nine PM to ten PM, rain date July 5th, 2015. It is understood and agreed that the town will be held harmless from all liability as to damage to property or injuries to any persons. No vehicles or equipment may remain on town property after the conclusion of the event. Any vehicles or equipment remaining on site will be removed at the expense of the association. No alcoholic beverages may be sold, dispensed, or consumed on town property. And this is subject to the sign off of the police chief.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any discussion? Mr. Slaver. No, it's okay, there's one small thing, forget it, it'll fix itself. Okay, the motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, it's unanimous, four zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work in doing these projects.
Thanks, see you at the fireworks.
Take care.
I just want to make a comment, it has nothing to do with here, as Community Events Committee did vote on Monday to go ahead and their funds up until June 30th, 2016, which they'll easily accumulate the money to pay, so that's basically already voted and set.
Okay, next up is request to use of town property by the onset Cape Verdean Festival. Come on down.
Hi, Michael.
Good evening. Mike Rodrick, onset Cape Verdean Festival. How is everyone tonight?
Fine, thank you. How are you?
He signed, yeah.
What was that, a message?
I can make the lights go off again.
We paid the bill. You have an event scheduled for the Cape Verdean Festival, August 8th, 2015, from seven AM to six PM.
Yes. Okay, can we have the town administrator, please? Do we have an agreement with terms of this?
No, we haven't spoke on this one. Last year, if I remember, I think it was a thousand dollars, we'd asked for parking. The board didn't act on that, so that would be my same recommendation. I'm thinking that might be, although the OBA may not be too happy, because I think that may be a little cheaper than fifty percent of the proceeds, if you will. So, I don't know, what do you usually bring in, about three, four thousand for the parking?
Usually we do fifty fifty with a VFW, because we have a shuttle bus. I don't think the OBA is paying for the shuttle bus. So we've got that expense. You can't park cars and not get them to the festival.
That was the note that was on there? It says something different than the figure here.
This is a two thousand dollar retainer fee for damages, any potential damages by municipal maintenance. This is a separate item.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so the fee is one thousand dollars, is what you're saying?
Would be for the...
Which is the same we were gonna do last year, and we put it off for that one year. Remember, last year we decided to, because nobody else was paying, to put it off, but everybody's paying now, so it's gonna be just the agreement we had last year, okay?
Okay, so this is for the use of the onset ban shell and the bluffs? And to close off a portion of Union Avenue for that day?
Yes.
May I read the rest of the permit? This is, I guess, my motion.
Yeah, go ahead, make your motion.
No markings with paint on any roadways. It is understood and agreed that the town will be held harmless from all liability as to damage to the property or injuries to any persons. All concessions, rides, and games to be inspected and reports submitted to the Selectmen's Office. No vehicles, including those vendors, may be parked or operated on that portion of the park in which lawn irrigation system is installed. No vehicles or equipment may remain on town property after the conclusion of the event. Any vehicles or equipment remaining on the site will be removed at the expense of the association. No alcoholic beverages may be sold, dispensed, or consumed on town property. Wobbin Avenue from Centennial Place to the parking lot designated for disabled shall be kept open and barricades erected to protect pedestrians. The location of barricades is at the discretion of the town's Americans with Disabilities Officer, who is the Director of Inspection Services. And the motion also includes the fee of one thousand dollars. And I'm gonna make this a separate motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, it's four zero zero.
Now I have a second motion, which would be for the onset Cape Verdean Festival, again, the date of August 8th, 2015. They need to have a two thousand dollar check payable to the town, which is a retainer for...
Maintenance bond, right.
Maintenance bond, which will be returned if...
Once everything's cleaned up, you get it back.
And how does that, who decides that, if there's any damages? The municipal department, we used to pay forty five hundred dollars to clean up. They are no longer able to do that.
Right, you're gonna do it now, right.
So we have to hire an outside person.
Right.
What are the parameters?
Which should cost you less, by the way, I would think.
I don't think so. But, either case, what are the parameters?
Well, municipal maintenance, obviously, it'll be their call, I'm sure, they'll go out and look, make sure it's clean, and if it's clean to the standard that they usually do it, they'll probably be fine with it.
I guess I could be a little bit more specific and say, the day before, it should look like the day before.
A pot.
Yeah, everything that you have permitted, so if it's picked up, then...
So there's a two thousand dollar retainer?
Yes, plus the thousand dollar fee, which is for the permit itself. The two thousand dollars would come back to you absent any damages.
The vendors, it's twenty-five per vendor?
Correct.
That money has to be upfront, too?
Correct.
So that's five thousand?
I don't know how many vendors you have, sir.
We usually have ninety to a hundred.
Okay.
And they have to sign now another piece of paper?
Correct.
Okay, well, if we knew about this in January, I would have sent it out in the application. So there's no way to get that signed until the festival.
We made the policy last year for the twenty-five dollars.
No, the twenty-five is not a problem, nope. It's just that signed piece of paper.
Well...
I can get it that day, but I can't get it to them now.
How are we gonna collect those?
How are you gonna, yeah, how are you gonna monitor and collect? Say you have vendor X.
I've already got the money. The money's not the problem. It's that piece of paper that's the problem, that never came up before.
Well...
The money's in your account.
Yes.
It has not been turned over to the town?
No, as I collect the money from that...
Okay, could you just hang on one second, we're gonna refer to town...
I think we can let them sign as they come in, I don't think there's any issue there.
Can you...
Go ahead, Mr. Bowen wants to jump in.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. There may be a practical solution, which is, I assume that there's gonna be somebody checking the vendors as they come in and set up.
Yes, I wish.
Great, you go over to them with a piece of paper, if they sign, and they've already paid you, they're in. If they don't sign, give them twenty-five bucks and tell them to hit the rug.
They will sign.
I'm sure they will.
I figured they would.
They wanna be doing more than I want.
So you'll have to do it that day. But you'll be responsible for it with a list and, you know, whatever, okay?
So the record will note that in this particular instance, the documentation...
Vendor documentation.
The vendor documentation will come in possibly the day after, or whenever the next business day is to the town hall.
Within five days.
Yeah, there's no rush.
Yeah, get them in as quick as you can.
Yeah.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by...
Him.
Mr. Titlebaum. That motion is on the fee, the motion is for the fee. And also that you'll get the thing signed and get them turned in, okay?
Right, second.
All right, so we...
Okay, so let me restate the motion.
Go ahead.
The motion is for the two thousand dollars for the whole harmless retainer for the municipal maintenance department. The vendor fees will be turned over, along with the documentation, subsequent to the event. Second.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside.
No one, you were gonna be done.
By Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. All right, that took a while, but you're in.
Thank you so much.
And all three checks go to the town of Wareham?
Yes.
Correct.
Please. All right, next up is the discussion and possible vote on C and B Emporium Junk Dealer's License.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
If everybody remembers, we suspended this license in a public hearing about a month ago. And it's back on for final disposition.
Before we start, do you want to just make that one statement? Excuse me? Before we start, make that statement about the OBA's fireworks in their...
Oh, okay. We have the same agreement with the, am I correct? One second. Am I correct, we have the same agreement with the fireworks for the cleanup?
Yes, they're...
But it was in their agreement, right?
That is correct, yes.
So, yes.
So the fireworks has the same two thousand dollar agreement that they're putting aside as well for the cleanup, okay? We're doing that with everybody, just so that we don't have to go out and clean it up, we'll have some money if we have to, you know what I mean? I imagine everybody's gonna do the due diligence and clean it up, and they're gonna get their money back, and it's probably not gonna be any issue at all. But we have to cover it somehow, you know? Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Next is, okay, so now, we had a public hearing, and this is on for final disposition. Now, since I was not the hearing officer, I'm gonna turn it back over to the hearing officer at the time, which was Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding, my recollection, that the action of the board was to suspend the license for thirty days, with the gentleman to return to us with an update on what he was doing, and that he was not to be open during those thirty days.
It was forty-five days, I believe, sir.
Forty-five days, okay.
Excuse me?
So, I want to read a report given to me by Lieutenant Walsec of the Police Department. And the report is from Sergeant Smith. "On June 12th, 2015, at approximately eleven forty-five AM, I arrived at 3045 Cranberry Highway. The building was obviously a commercial building with large signboard above the front door and another freestanding sideboard along the roadway. Both signboards were blank with the previous business name painted over. There were several handmade signs posted along the roadway and on the front windows of the business announcing a sale. The front door was open and I observed two customers enter. There were also items outside the store with listed for sale, including appliances, furniture, and a canoe. Upon entry, I observed Charles Lewis seated at a desk just inside the entrance. The inside of the building was in complete disarray. There were boxes of miscellaneous items throughout, leaving a narrow pathway to walk through. I know Mr. Lewis from a previous encounter, and he greeted me as I entered and apologized for the mess. Mr. Lewis said he was in the process of relocating the business to another location on Route Six. There were several other customers looking at merchandise in the store. Inside the store, I located a Franklin hockey stick with a seven dollar price tag. I brought the item to Mr. Lewis and expressed an interest in purchasing the item. Mr. Lewis said he would take two dollars for the item. I handed Mr. Lewis two dollars in cash. After leaving the store, I observed two other customers exit with newly purchased items. The hockey stick was transferred to the police station and logged as evidence."
Okay.
So, my question to you, sir, is in view of the fact that the license was suspended...
Correct.
How was it that you, well, did you deny this?
Oh, no, I'm not denying it at all, sir.
Okay, well, then, I guess, well, hold on, then the question is, if you didn't have a license to operate, how did you see fit to continue business?
I will get into that in one moment, sir. I goes back...
That's the question that was asked.
With respect... I had no right...
I have a simple question that I've put to you.
Okay, and I'm glad to answer this.
It appears that you were in business, notwithstanding the fact that you did not have a license to conduct the business. So kindly explain to the board what you were doing and why.
Okay, there is approximately two hundred dealers with the one-eighth of a mile on Cranberry Highway who has no license, no permits, and...
Okay, so, Mr. Lewis, just so I understand what you're saying here, because it's your belief that those other people don't have a license and are operating, you believe that it's proper for you to operate without a license?
I shut down.
Is that what you're saying?
Right, no, excuse me, I shut down...
Okay, then don't tell us about the other businesses that don't have licenses.
All right.
Tell us why, in view of the fact that you were in front of this board, and you knew that your license was suspended, that you continued to operate. That's what we want to hear.
All right, yes. I was shut down, I complied for forty-two, forty-three days, there was nothing for sale until recently. My financial is into a bankruptcy right now. I have to move the location. The landlady is selling the property, she wanted to... The town found out that there's a hole in the roof, I cannot afford to pay several thousand dollars, the landlord had sold the property since then, therefore I am leaving. I went against the town rules that they granted me the permits there, and for forty-two days, I didn't put nothing out there until recently, okay? Financially, I'm going into a bankruptcy. I had to close one store, which was an Eagle-Eagle Act, down to the second store. I apologize, but I complied every time. I came back to the committee and I asked if I can please put out a dresser and a little bicycle, and I was denied that. Truwell, Cranberry Highway, I'm sure all know that the guy next door has five hundred seventeen pieces hanging on his building.
All right. Mr. Lewis, you know what?
Yeah.
We're gonna address other unlicensed businesses.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
The business that we are addressing right now is your business. So it's your testimony that for every day except for the day that the police sergeant came in, you were closed down.
I was closed.
Is that what you're telling us?
There was no activity going on.
It was just that one day, you decided to open.
That one day, sir, excuse me, there was two days, I put this product out there because financially, I'm in a financial bind right now, and I needed some money to move, number one, I am cleaning up the property, number two, I have to come up the first and last in moving expenses. I'm broke. This goes on for five months. They closed me down from the last time, they closed me down where I couldn't have any furnitures outside at all, from everybody on this trip. And where's their trip and fall insurance? Nobody has insurance on this. I went in there, I have to have trip and fall and permission from the town, everything I complied to, sir. Excuse me, if I had out two days of a little sale, getting rid of some merchandise that I don't want, and I sold it more or less as a giveaway to the towns, people that need product, that they have that kind of money. But I did go against the town rules for them two days, and I apologize for that. But I am seeking a new place to go to, and I will let the town know that I will address any place that I am taking on, and I was granted that license, and I'm proud to hold on to that license, and I did comply to all needs through this here. I believe this is the sixth time in front of the board.
Well, Ms. Chairman, at this point, as hearing officer, I have nothing further to contribute to the discussion. At this point, it's up to the board as to what it wants to do with the gentleman.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so I want to make one point to myself today, that I got a message today from the police department that they had to go down and close him down today. I just want everybody to know that. He was open, he had stuff outside on the street, he had big signs on it and so on and so forth, and the police department went down and told him that he had to shut down.
Which I did do so, sir, immediately. They asked me politely, and I said, yes, sir, I gave it twenty minutes.
He did shut down, he did comply, the police did mention that he did comply. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Titlebaum.
I think we need, before we do anything, we need to have a finding of fact that the business was open despite the fact that it was under suspension and should not have been open.
Okay.
I'd like us to find that fact by vote, please.
Make a motion.
I move that Wareham Board of Selectmen find that C and B Emporium, notwithstanding the forty-five day suspension, was in fact open during that time.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. So we now have a finding of fact.
Motion to revoke.
Okay, do I have any motions, or do you want any more discussion? What do we want to do?
I make a motion to revoke immediately the license to C and...
Junk dealer's license.
Junk dealer license to C and B Emporium.
May I make a correction on that, ma'am? It's not C and B, it's Cash for Furn... Cash for Stuff, excuse me, is the correct name on that?
It is.
Due to the license that was granted to me, because it will file you guys out.
It's Cash for...
It's Cash for Stuff.
It's Cash for Stuff, right.
So...
Mr. Chairman, just to make sure we're voting on the right thing, is it Cash for Stuff or Cash for Stuff Two? I seem to recall a Cash for Stuff Two.
Because there were two locations...
The second one closed.
Okay.
Where it goes, this is Cash for Stuff.
All right, just want to make sure we're voting on the right piece of...
That's correct, right?
Application, right permit here, license.
All right, so motion made by Ms. Whiteside, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Before you actually take the vote, the gentleman referenced a bankruptcy. And my concern here, and this is my only concern, is that we do not find ourselves ourselves in violation of the automatic state provisions of the Bankruptcy Code, Section 362A, I believe it is. So, sir, I'm going to ask you, have you or your bankruptcy attorney served the town clerk of Wareham with notice of your bankruptcy?
Negative. I am approaching that, I, my financial right now record is down, down, down.
Mr. Chairman, without that filing, we have no official notice of a bankruptcy. Thank you.
Okay, fine, thank you.
So, I just would like to clarify the motion.
Yeah, okay.
Which is to revoke.
Well, why don't you withdraw the motion?
Withdraw my second.
Withdraw the motion, okay. Start over again.
Okay. I move to revoke immediately the Junk Dealer's License to Cash for Stuff II and, or Charles A. Lewis, DBA, Cash for Stuff II, II as in the, um, number, and/or C and B Emporium, thirty-two forty-five Cranberry Highway, Buzzards Bay, Massachusetts, oh-two-five-three-two.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any discussion?
Are we sure that's the right location?
Is that, can, is that the, does that match the
Police report.
Police report, please, sir?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, the police report says three-zero-four-five Cranberry Highway.
I told you, it's wrong. Cash for Stuff II is the old one. It's not the other one.
Three-zero, that's the correct address, too. Three-zero, uh, that's Flo's property.
Paperwork you have in the folder is the older.
So the one that he has is the correct one.
Then my motion needs to be amended, too.
All right, let's, uh, withdraw the second.
Withdraw.
Withdraw the motion. Let's try it one more time.
Okay.
What's the actual, it's three-zero something, right?
Thirty-two.
Three-zero-four-five, right?
Cash for Stuff.
Is it?
Cash for Stuff.
Stuff or not?
Three-zero-four-five.
Okay. Charles, I move that the, for the immediate revocation of the Junk Dealer's License, the name of Charles A. Lewis, DBA Cash for Stuff and/or C and B Emporium, the three-zero-four-five Cranberry Highway, Buzzards Bay, Mass., oh-two-five-three-two.
Okay.
May I?
Uh, just one, one point of clarification. The address is in Wareham, the mailing address is in Buzzards Bay.
Correct.
Correct.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four-zero-zero.
May I voice my opinion, sir, for final time?
Uh, no, you're done. Have a nice day.
I am done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, with your indulgence, I'd ask the board to make one more finding.
Okay.
And if I can just give you a brief explanation of the reason for it.
Okay.
Uh, the automatic state provisions of the Bankruptcy Code prohibit parties from acting on assets. And the classic example was in the case of Inray Jen Corelli, in which a licensing board suspended a license for non-payment of, uh, fees and taxes. Uh, the court did say, however, that a licensing authority was not prohibited from taking disciplinary action as a result of licensing or public safety violations. So, if it is your belief that there are public safety or licensing violations, I would suggest, just for the benefit of the court, should it ever have occasion to review what we've done here tonight, that you make a finding to that effect. Thank you.
Peter, could you make that motion, please?
Uh, I move that the Wareham Board of Selectmen find as a fact that the, uh, Cash for Stuff II and/or D and B.
Emporium.
That's scary.
Emporia, uh, let, let me see it again.
Yes.
Make sure it's all according to the oil here.
Cash for Stuff, C and B Emporium, this.
Okay, Cash for Stuff II, C and B Emporium.
It's together. C and B has nothing to do with it. This was the original owner. That has nothing to do with it.
Was in fact in violation of the suspension of its license at the time it was open illegally.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms. Whiteside. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
So for three days that I opened up, my license was suspended, and I complied with everything with the committee for the last five months?
You didn't, Mr., you listen, don't, don't even go there with me, because you didn't, you did not comply to anything, okay? And I don't even want to hear it. You're all done. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much.
If you would complied, you'd have a license right now. Mr. Evans, can you come down? We're gonna do EMS. Who the hell is it?
Item C.
Item C, there it is, right there. It's only one more down.
Good evening, Mr. Evans, how are you?
Okay. Hello, Mr. Evans.
How are you?
How's things?
Good.
I know you've been busy, more than you want to.
I did, I did just cheat because he was expecting to be up at about nine-thirty. I said he'd be up sooner.
Oh, we got a little hour then. Oh, we're, we're moving through this agenda. Who's kidding who? We're almost done. We're flying.
So this is the, uh, the ambulance policy that we have. Part of this is, uh, it is a Board of Selectmen policy. It's also going to help us with our management letter. Uh, and I appreciate all the hard work that Mr. Evans is, uh, and others we've all put into it.
Okay.
I don't want, uh, there, there's some things that we, I think Mr. Evans would prefer that was in there that maybe we'd taken out, but that's, uh, we all worked and at the end of it, we've come up with a pretty good policy.
I want to, again, thank you for, um, all of your efforts and your actions and the time that you spent on this. And I will move that we adopt Policy fifteen-oh-six, which is the ambulance receivables collection write-off policy, the town of Wareham.
Motion
Second.
by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous, four-zero-zero. Thank you.
Yes.
So if you read, if you read between the lines, the good is, the good parts of it are Dave Evans. Anything that's bad in there is my fault, so.
Right.
Exactly.
We perfectly understand that.
It will be effective immediately.
That, that's understood in all dealings with your department heads.
That's a, that's a given.
Do you have your prepared statement that you want to read now?
Well, you took half of it. I didn't have anything to say.
You survived, Whiteside, you're all set.
You survived, is right. You made it through.
That's right, you survived the operation and fulfilled a thing.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up, we're gonna jump back to the pawnbroker's license. And, uh, the only reason why this was on here was because we had some issues relevant to, uh, the pawnbrokers that we had in town. We had one. And the license wasn't, hadn't been renewed. It since has been renewed. So we, he now has a junk dealer's license and a pawnbroker's license. So there's really no issue here. I, I think we're all set as far as this goes.
Yeah, the only reason we asked was because I actually stopped at Dominic's once and asked him, do you have your pawnbroker's license besides your junk license? And he said, no. And
You got it all now.
And we thought that that might be an issue because we do list a pawnbroker's license in our bylaws separately. So this was just to remedy the situation.
So you're all set, happy, happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, discussion and vote on the fraud risk policy.
The fraud risk policy, I will have Mr. Sullivan address this. Um.
You know what? He's out there, so let's go, let's, uh.
Skip to the Agawam Cemetery.
Let's skip, we'll do the discussion and possible vote on the uniqueness determination for Agawam Cemetery acquisition. Mr., um, I would like Mr. Bowen to weigh in on this, please.
Yep.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, members of the board, whenever we go to acquire real estate, we are obliged to follow Uniform Procurement Act, Chapter thirty-B, Section sixteen.
This is it.
Uh, ordinarily required to go through a competitive process to solicit bids. You know, we would put out an ad saying, we're looking for so many acres with such and such qualities. The law, however, provides an exception, it's Section sixteen, uh, where unique circumstances exist. And I'll submit respectfully to the board that in the case of the Agawam Cemetery exemption, there are such unique circumstances. We have an opportunity to purchase a piece of land. We've been authorized by town meeting to do so, a piece of land that's immediately adjacent to the cemetery. In fact, a piece of land that may even have colonial era burials on it right now. Uh, so, uh, in order for us to acquire this land without having to go through a competitive procurement process, which frankly, it would seem to be futile since the number of parcels that are but the Agawam Cemetery has got to be, well, this is it.
There's one more.
Yeah, okay, well, there's one more.
Two more.
And maybe someday we'll be looking at those as well. Uh, it, it would be futile to go out to bid on something like that. The law allows us to acknowledge the futility by making a declaration of uniqueness. I believe I had prepared a motion for you to that effect. Uh, if and when the board chooses to vote that, the town administrator and I will work to file the appropriate paperwork with the state, uh, so that we're clear on the procurement front. Thank you.
I move to declare the Agawam expansion property to have unique qualities because it is adjacent to an existing cemetery and represents a unique opportunity to expand the Agawam Cemetery. I also move to declare it unique because it is possible that there are existing burials on the proposed acquisition site which date to colonial times.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
May I ask
Okay, we can move on with the sale.
That this be expedited, that the seller be notified? Thank you.
If I may, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I can give you a brief update. Uh, the, the seller and I have, uh, been having fairly frequent discussions on a variety of issues, including disclosure, beneficial interests, and other state requirement. Uh, but also on fairly simple issues about, you know, how the check would be made out. Uh, right now, uh, he, the seller is asking that it be made out strictly in his name. Uh, there may be a mortgage on the property, so we'll have to look into, uh, perhaps.
Your title.
Yeah, my suggestion was that we, uh, do a closing, uh, or make the check jointly payable so that he and his bank could work it out. The, these are not major issues, but they're ones that we have to work through. But we are working on it.
Well, you're doing the title anyway, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So we'll know all that. Okay, good. Okay, good. Any, anybody else? Okay.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna move back, we're gonna go, we're gonna jump back up to the, uh, the fraud risk policy. Mr. Sullivan, you want to take us through the fraud risk policy, please?
I got distracted, excuse me. If you go, yeah.
I also have the dates, um, where we'll be going through each department, going, starting
in June to go through.
You gotta talk into the mic, I can't hear you.
I also have the dates where we'll be starting in June, going through each of the departments with the policy. Again, this is, uh, this is one of the policies that we'd like to update, have, that will help us with our manager letter, and it's just, it's overall sound business practice as well.
Okay. All right, so can I have a motion then, please?
Move that we adopt the fraud risk policy as presented this evening, uh, prepared by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four-zero-zero. All right, I'm gonna skip over the room twenty-seven thing, uh, right now and go to the discussion and possible vote on the Comcast contract, because I see the attorney is here. Uh, Mr. Titlebaum, you can take us through that if you would.
Well, I'll actually defer to the chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And allow him to, uh, prize the board of where we are.
Could each of you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
William Solomon, Special Cable Counsel, working with the town of Wareham.
Could you spell your lesson?
Sure. S-O-L-O-M-O-N.
Thank you.
You look a little older than the last time I saw you.
It's, you know, it's just the.
I bet I do, too, huh?
It's just the hair.
You know, we worked together back in, what, two thousand?
If, if I, you could just take a liberty for a second. I was thrilled, uh, to see uh, Selectman Trupiano on the board and recently elected chairman. Uh, when we did the last renewal, uh, we had three, uh, many weeks, many months and years, but three intensive days
We sure did.
Twelve-hour negotiations, uh, on the phone with Comcast on a very, very important issue to the town. And as a result, and it was really hand-to-hand, working together, and I couldn't thank him enough. Uh, he, uh, we, we ended up, uh, winning the, all the arguments, but we won so much that the company ended up saying, you win, you're right, our, our institutional network, our fiber system should be up to the standard you say, but that's, we don't want to do it, so here's $325,000, build your own.
Yeah.
And, uh, we, we got that all done, and then the next day, I didn't get to see him for a few years.
Yeah.
So it's, it's great to be back, and I want to thank you again for all that, that great work.
Yeah, it was a lot of, a lot of work at the time.
Followed this time by, uh, Selectman Titlebaum, filling, filling your shoes in the same manner, so thank you.
And I'm sure he did a terrific job, you know, he's a good guy, a good man.
It's good to see you. It was, I, I, I remember well, the, those days. Thank you.
All right, so take us through it.
I will, thank you very much. And I have.
Should we all introduce ourselves first?
That'd be good, good on the record.
Uh, I'm Paul Giacchetti, I'm the chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee. Uh, Matt Underhill is one of, one of our members.
Matthew Underhill, IT Director for the town, member of the Cable Advisory Committee.
And again, William Solomon, Special Cable Counsel.
TA.
Okay, I, I know it's late and you've been busy. Uh, we, we, what we have here is what the committee has voted on and believes, and I as your counsel believe, is an excellent cable renewal license with Comcast. What I thought I'd do is I'd go through the basic terms, and then I'd go through the final issue that we were working out today, uh, the senior discount. So let, let me just briefly go over the license. Uh, as, as limited by Massachusetts law, it's a ten-year license. That's the limit to a license. With the changing world of technology, potential change of laws going forward, the committee and myself believe a ten-year license is definitely in the interest of the, uh, of, of the town. If it wasn't a good license, then it shouldn't be granted. But if you get a good license, like a little long-term mortgage, it's, it makes sense to make it ten years. Very significantly, that, uh, similar to your existing license and prior licenses, cable service must be made available to all residential dwellings in town. There are more communities than not have what's called, it's called density requirements, that you have to have fifteen or twenty or thirty or sixty dwelling units per mile. And there are many communities that, that had service to the whole community, and then in the more recent renewals, in the negotiation process, they lost that. And that's critical, to be, to be very straight about it, because of the, the fact that along with cable service comes the ability to get internet service. And, uh, I, I want to thank the, the committee and then the board for standing strong on that issue. If you, if you have homes that are built without the ability to get internet service in the modern day, then they don't, they don't, uh, get information from the schools, they can't connect to their jobs, they can't connect to their community. And so that, this license, again, requires service availability throughout the community, to every residential area. And that was something that we had made clear to Comcast, and we thank them for recognizing its importance. The PEG Access, PEG as you know, is Public Education and Government Access Television, Community Programming. I think you've seen in the last ten years what your local community access corporation can do in terms of connecting the, the public to government, connecting the community to different organizations, and being part of the local and creative economy. And there's certainly, uh, there's more that they can do, and you will work with them to make sure that they meet all of your needs and the community needs. But they've done a great job, and so that's made this license renewal somewhat easier, uh, in terms of getting support. And the support continues at four-point-five percent of gross revenues. The, uh, that's very close to the maximum allowed by federal law, and when you get the maximum allowed by federal law, there are deductions. So the difference between four-point-five and five, uh, is, is more limited than the number sounds. In addition.
Five being the limit, the upper limit.
Five, five percent being the upper limit. Very importantly, the license provides that the percentage is applied to a broad definition of gross revenues. Not only subscriber revenues, but non-subscriber revenues, advertising, home shopping, things like that. That's important as cable continues to change because of the competitive field of telecommunications, that it may be that the model becomes more advertising-based. Now, six to eight percent of Comcast revenues, uh, in cable are advertising revenues. And so this license, uh, preserves non-subscriber advertising revenue to better protect the town's financial interest, to make sure that this access can continue going forward. The capital payment is totaled $307,750. That's split out over ten years, $30,075 per year. There are some advantages to that. The company, uh, is able, is, is able to make some, um, decisions in terms of how it handles its pricing, such that by taking it over ten years, it not only benefits the town by having a larger amount, but also, uh, causes them to, to charge their customers less. They're their customers, not ours. We can't control their rate, but as a result, uh, we have a less of an impact on, uh, on subscribers. There are, needed to be three PEG Access channels. That's important, as you know, Public Education and Government. PEG Access Video Origination, that's how you get the programming from, from your remote buildings, your town buildings, your other public buildings, the Access Corporation, back to one site where it's picked up by Comcast and also Verizon, and returned to, to their subscribers. Going forward, instead of, uh, instead of having a copper coaxial based system, which has amplifiers, and where the sound and picture, including of your meetings, will not be as clear as it needs to be for people to watch and listen, going forward, they're building an entirely new fiber-based system. Unlike many licenses, this license says it'll be fiber-based, so that, that'll be true for the ten years of the license. It won't be replaced by wireless. Um, and in addition, um, uh, there'll be new, uh, uh, transmitters and receivers, and the company will be paying toward that the amount of fifty, fifty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. If there's anything in addition to that, that that would be paid for through the capital dollars that are provided. But as specked out for the buildings in town, that dollar amount, uh, is anticipated to be more than enough. And that would mean that you'd have a new fiber-based video return system from the town hall, from this multi-service center, from the library, from the high school, from the middle school, uh, importantly, also for the first time from Spalane Field. So that, uh, that will add to your ability to see and hear programming going forward and reliability.
And everything will be have a capability of, uh, being broadcast in stereo now. Everything's in stereo.
Yeah. Uh, in, in addition, cable service.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Everything is capable of being broadcast in stereo now.
Oh, thank you.
I, I just make a general, uh, comment that the pu, public policy, the legal provisions are all very, very protective of the town's interests. We've gone over very carefully. Uh, and then finally, the, the final issue, issue is the senior discount. Now, a senior discount is, under the law, is voluntary by the company. The town cannot require the company to give a senior discount. The committee, uh, both last license and this license, understand that it, that, uh, trying to get the best senior discount that's doable and possible is, is a goal. So that, um, I had what I thought was, I'd sent to, uh, the Comcast So that I had what I thought was, I'd sent to the Comcast representative, a sample for a senior discount for communities in this area, and that was, have a discount of $2 off what they call digital starter, what they used to call standard service, basic and expanded basic. And $2 off, it also, they require financial qualification. Today, we received, we had been waiting for, but we finally received a letter from Comcast stating what the senior discount letter. And when I looked at that, I noticed that the letter was different. It didn't have the $2 discount off digital starter, it had 10% off basic. Now, and only, with 10% off basic, you would only qualify for the discount if you had only basic service, if you had any other service in addition to basic, you would not qualify. So there would be fewer people who qualify, and the discount would be a lower discount than the $2. Additionally, the letter provided, and I think you have a copy of that letter, fewer criteria by which seniors would financially qualify. It had down-receiving SSI Medicaid or Medicaid benefits under Social Security, very, very limited, very few people would have that. What I tried to do, understanding this is their constraints, that the draft that I had sent included mass fuel assistance, there are more people also who get fuel assistance, and also is a program you're probably familiar with, the Property Tax Elderly Asset and Income Abatement Relief Program, where folks apply to your Board of Assessors, and if you qualify for that in the draft letter we had, those folks would also qualify for the senior discount. I called the Comcast representative today at about 5:30, and I told them I was surprised to see the letter. They'd indicated that the, their company policy had changed as of last week. I said, "Well, were we informed of that?" I was said, told no. So I indicated that it was important, and that that letter go back to what had been discussed beforehand in abutting communities, and was consistent with what was represented. To her credit, and I thank her, she spoke to a superior, and they got the okay. So the only thing that'll change from what you have tonight is that the senior discount letter will be provided tomorrow by Mary O'Keefe of Comcast, and will reflect the, what I've stated here today in terms of the $2 off the digital starter, and the larger number of bases upon which someone can financially qualify. And then finally, that letter also has what they call the Education Connection Program, and that is free internet service for the schools and library. Although you have your internet service, there are times where that can be beneficial as a backup. And so the senior, the discount letter will not only have the better terms for the senior discount, but will also have the provision of the educational and library internet service. So with that said, you know, as your counsel, I feel that it's an excellent license, the committee's recommended your approval, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and I've given a draft motion, which would stay the same, except that on paragraph number two, it would recognize and acknowledge the letter that will be forwarded with tomorrow's date, consistent with what I've represented here, which has been agreed to by Comcast.
That's what I was gonna ask you is, how we'll put that in there. Okay, Peter, do you want anything, you want to say anything?
No.
You're working diligently on this?
No, I'd just like to thank the members of the committee and Chairman Chikatelli, Attorney Solomon. It's been a long, arduous road, mostly because Comcast people seem to take a lot of vacations, and I'll just leave it at that.
Also, it should be noted that the little tag that says how much they're paying for PEG Access on the bill will go down by half, so...
And that's a reflection of the fact that the last license was reached when Comcast had all of its subscribers. So then after, to the great credit of the board here, you signed the license with Verizon, providing a competitor, Comcast lost X percentage, you know, 40%, 45% of its subscribers in Wareham, which is somewhat typical. And as a result of that, they were charging their subscribers, which is their right, I understand, they can charge whatever they want. The only difference is whether they can say, "Well, we're doing it because we're paying the town." They can do it because they pay their landlord, they do it because they pay their lawyers, their accountants. Because they lost those subscribers, what they decided to charge their subscribers was larger, because there were fewer subscribers. So as a result, it's not because this license is less than the other license and benefits, it's because this license reflects their current subscriber base. Going forward, we'll be entering negotiations with Verizon, we anticipate getting a similar license from Verizon. So the town will actually have more resources for public education government access, but in terms of Comcast, they now will figure out their rate structure based upon the actual number of subscribers, rather than the fact that they beforehand lost subscribers. So it's not a reflection of the license, it's a reflection of their lower subscriber base as a result of good news that this competition in Wareham. One final note, and this goes back to the work done before, it wasn't a sure thing that Wareham would have Verizon FiOS. Many communities don't have Verizon FiOS, and in fact, for over three, four years now, Verizon is out of the FiOS business, they're no longer building FiOS system anywhere in the country, they've done a cross-marketing deal with Comcast in the West Coast, they've sold systems in Washington and Oregon. So the fact that Wareham residents have a competitor and have a choice is a reflection of that this board at the time reached out to Verizon and said, "You need to come here, and it's important, and if you want to say to the state and federal government that communities are in the way of licensing, then you'd better come here and do a license, or otherwise, it's the problem in getting FiOS, is that Verizon doesn't want to build it." So it was, this board's very proactive stance that caused Verizon to come to Wareham. And, but for that proactive stance, I don't believe that Wareham would have Verizon FiOS today, so it really was active activity on the part of the Board of Selectmen.
Truthfully, that competition won't get them to answer the phone any faster, or get you off a hold.
All right, thank you. Peter, you want to make a motion, please?
Yes, I'll make the motion. "Board of Selectmen, town of Wareham, grant of cable television renewal license, two, Comcast of Massachusetts One, Inc., June 16, 2015. I hereby move that the Board of Selectmen, as cable television license issuing authority, vote as follows. One, to grant the subject cable television renewal license with an effective date of June 16, 2015, to Comcast of Massachusetts One, Inc., here and after Comcast. All terms and conditions contained in this renewal license have been agreed to by Comcast. Comcast, by and through its authorized representative, will execute this renewal license agreement as set out on the signature page of the renewal license. Two, to recognize and acknowledge the side letter from Comcast entitled, quote..."
And that part'll change to, to be provided?
Right.
Yep.
But, but we will still have a side letter, so entitled, correct?
Well, it's also gonna add to it, thank you for making it, that the educational...
The name of it? EdConnect.
Yeah, EdConnect will also be added to the title of the letter.
Okay, do you want me to hold off on that motion?
No, 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 I think that'd be great, as you said, the discount available to eligible Wareham senior citizens, and just add to that, the Education Connection Program.
Okay, discount available to eligible Wareham senior citizens and the Education Connection Program dated June 16, 2015.
Yeah, and I think we might even have, we'll probably have tomorrow's date on it, June 17.
June 17.
But thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, second by Ms. Whiteside, discussion. Mr. Slaven?
I'm still not very happy. The $300,000 that we got originally upfront, when they spread it out, to make it sound nice, they're gonna charge the customers less to offset the expense. Bottom line is that what we should have had in there, and I wasn't involved, so I can't say anything really, except that I would have fought very hard for an inflation factor for every, every year going forward, for those 10 years to be included in there. It's a lot cheaper for this company to take that $300,000 and spread it over 10 years, you know, so they saved themselves some money, and I don't think we should have accepted it. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up, discussion and vote to request of WCTV to, for Room 27 at the Town Hall to be converted into a television meeting room. That's for our board meetings, as everybody knows, we want to set that up. I think the town administrator has some input into this.
That's directly across the hall from the Selectmen's Room. We do need another meeting room in which we can film, we can have our boards and committees in there, would also help us if we're going to do any sort of training and such, to be able to film, and that room is the ideal room for what we have. It's smaller than this, obviously, but it's a nice, it's a similar shape, if you will, and that's why we've chosen to outfit that. We'd like to approach WCTV to have them set that up for the next filming.
I'd like to be a little more aggressive in approach, I think it's in our contract, and it's time that we insist on this being happening.
Let's make a motion to send the request to them forthwith.
I move that WC, that the town administrator be directed to...
Well, the board has to do it.
Okay, that the Board of Selectmen...
Send the letter.
Send the letter.
Just authorize the chairman to send the letter.
Authorize the chair.
It's been a long day.
I know.
Okay. Vote to authorize Mr. Trupiano, the chair, to send a letter to WCTV informing them that Room 27 at the Town Hall at 54 Marion Road shall be converted into a televised meeting room on or before July 30, 2015.
Okay, I will, I will have a motion, you a second?
I'll second, just for one bit of discussion and clarification.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Slaven earlier referenced something about being in the contract.
It's in the contract.
At present, we have no contract with WCTV.
That's true.
That's true.
It's expired.
But they're gonna want one.
Well, they'll want one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They're gonna want one.
I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
But I just wanted, I just wanted the record to reflect that we're currently not...
That's fine.
I also would like to ask that Mr. Sullivan be authorized to, you know, work on your behalf to say where he wants the cameras and all, you know, which way he wants the room to face.
Okay. All right.
Why, he has a good side?
I'll stop there.
Did you Whiteside that room yet?
Yes, I Whitesided that room.
Okay. All right, so a motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, is there any discussion?
One more piece, the contract is only half-expired, just so everybody remembers, the Verizon contract is still in place, and that's...
I'm talking about the contract with WCTV.
Yes, our contract also, I believe, is not fully expired with them.
I'm not so sure of that.
It has.
I think it's expired.
We...
We renewed it...
We expired the lease, and I think the contract was over.
We renewed the lease, but we did not vote as a board here to grant an extension of the contract yet, because we haven't seen the proposed extended contract.
Long before FiOS came, we gave them their contract.
Yeah.
Before FiOS even was here, so we had to add that later on. All right, so, motion made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, okay, Janet, get that letter ready. Good luck.
And just for the record, it will be an audio, visual, video as well, audio, video...
Yes.
Studio.
The whole thing, the whole show, just like they do in here.
Just like in here.
All right.
Don't be surround sound, you're all set.
Good quality.
Next up is discussion of the sign bylaw appointment of sign enforcement. All right, so, you know, we have this issue with our signs, and one of the problems that we have is, first off, it allows us to appoint enforcement people to go down and take signs down. One of the problems I guess they're having in some of the communities, if you don't have authorization, you go take one of the signs down, they want to sue you to get the sign, the money back from the signs. So we need to authorize some individuals that can actually go out there and take the signs down, and that way they're covered, if I understand this correctly. Is that correct, Mr. Slaven?
The way the sign bylaw works is the Director of Inspeccional Services can authorize anyone he wants to basically perform that action. It can be any of his inspectors or anybody else, so if this board is interested in doing it on its own as well, we can send a letter requesting that he appoint us as well, if you want to go there.
I would like to see him make some appointments of, especially us who are around the community all the time, if anybody here so chooses to want to take these signs down, that we send that letter.
Yeah, that might already be happening.
And get the authorization to do that. Anyone want to make a motion to send that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Titlebaum, seconded by Ms. Whiteside, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that's unanimous. All right, next up, 48-hour business, Mr. Sullivan first, please.
I have nothing.
None? Mr. Titlebaum?
None.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes. Yeah, I'll leave the school department alone for today. What I have actually is, this past thing we just discussed about WCTV and the contract and stuff, I'm still extremely unhappy we've gone to this point, and we still have no resolutions decided on. I would expect very much our request for the studio, probably nothing will happen because they haven't been able to make a decision on anything in life in quite a while.
There's a date specific.
It doesn't matter what it is, because technically, if we do not have a contract really there, and we're running based on the old contract, even though it's not signed, they could just simply say no because there's no contract.
Well, they have Mr. Ruiz in charge now, is that correct?
I understand, but all I'm trying to get at is, we've not been able to sit down and get these things resolved, and it just keeps floundering and floundering.
Okay, I will, I will...
We need to get this on the agenda of figuring this out.
I will get him in here, I will get Mr. Ruiz in here, I'll have some conversation with him, and I'll get him in here on an agenda coming up.
I think I'd like to see Mr. White, who runs the organization, which I am not happy with, because this has been going on for several years, and it's time we talk to him, because the question is, do we go ahead and re-sign them up, or do we go in a different direction?
Okay.
It's time to make a decision.
All right, no problem, we'll get him in here. Anybody, Mr. Whiteside, any 24-hour business?
Mr. Whiteside.
Ms. Whiteside, please.
Mr. Whiteside.
Mr. Whiteside, you know, that might be a Freudian slip. Get down in that hole.
Do you have the vest, I have a problem with it, do you have the vest?
That's my gift.
Okay. What am I doing?
48-hour business, do you have any? No, okay, and I have none, thank you. That took a long time just to get through that one item.
No, ma'am, I don't.
Authorization to sign bills, we have none. Well, we have one, well, that's a separate item. Okay, approval of minutes, could you bring us through the minutes, please?
Yes, I certainly can, I would move...
Are they spelled right, by the way?
They have been proofread by an expert, they actually have been typed by an expert.
She didn't get a B?
She got an A minus.
A minus, that's very good.
May 19, 2015, I move that they be approved as written.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four zero zero.
June 2, 2015, be approved as written, regular session.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous.
And the executive session minutes of 6:215 be approved and held.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four zero zero. Okay, approval of payment of Law Office, Mr. Bowen, he's really catching up.
I move that the, we authorize the payment to the Law Office, Attorney Richard Bowen, for $15,000.
Motion made by Ms. Whiteside, seconded by Mr. Slaven. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, four zero zero. And that brings us to the end of a long agenda, and look at that, folks! No, we're not telling you...
No, you didn't ask for liaison reports.
What are you talking about? Oh, yes.
Do you have town administration report?
Town administrator's report.
Oh, sorry, I skipped over you guys. Town administrator's report for you.
Let me see, I've got all this right here.
Oh, you do not.
Let's hear the gentleman's side.
Last week, we met with representatives from the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office regarding their abandoned housing initiative. Bob Ether, David Moore, Lieutenant Walsec, Chairman Trupiano, Selectman Slaven, and myself all attended the meeting. The abandoned housing initiative is where the Attorney General's Office uses the enforcement authority of the state sanitary code to turn these properties around. This is not a tear-down program, so this is not something that, those that are completely dilapidated, it's not a tear-down program, but rather one where the goal is to rehab the property, bring it up to code. This is a program that can help us clean up abandoned and blighted property, and as such, we will enter the town into the program. We will forward 10 recommended properties, I understand that there's more out there, but they have requested 10 to start with, to the Attorney General's Office to start the process. Please understand that this is not an instant fix, it can take well over a year if we need to go through the full process, but is a great step toward helping clean up the community. So I appreciate Chairman Trupiano and Selectman Slaven being there, and Chairman Trupiano stayed on for the grand tour, so...
It was actually quite interesting.
I ran into, this past weekend, on Saturday, as I was doing the Escape the Cape, which I didn't mention earlier, which went off very well, they did a great job cleaning up after themselves too, that the, when I was down on the boulevard there, the particular house, the first one, we saw the big one that was empty, down past the beginning there, the neighbor came out, neighbors across the street, we were talking about it, and they were overjoyed, because sitting there is a blight in the neighborhood for quite a while.
It's a beautiful house.
It would be, it could be, it also has a second house around the corner, that same kind of thing, but they were overjoyed to hear that this is a program which would not tear it down, but rebuild it up, because the gentleman to the right of that house...
of that house, his place is spotless, he was out there with a brush and shovel taking, shoveling sand off the road when I was there. So, I mean, it's definitely gonna be a positive plus for the whole town.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for getting this thing up and running.
I appreciate the support on getting that going. We have the bid going out for the streetlight upgrades, if you remember at town meeting, we set aside $50,000. Some people have been asking about the fixing of the streetlights, we're using those funds to put it out to bid, to also receive incentives from Eversource. Instead of just spending the money where it could be 600, 600 to $1,000 to fix each light, you can use the same funds, maybe a little less with the incentives, to upgrade it to an energy-efficient LED light, which is much better, which is actually is a cleaner, whiter light, if you will, rather than the yellow that you have from the sodium. So when those bids come in, we'll bring that forward to the boards and let you know the results. And lastly, and I'm sorry that she left, I appreciate Eleanor Martin and the OBA, they reached out to us to have a meeting with the department heads before these events, to meet with some of the event organizers. I appreciate Chief Goodwin, he allowed us to use the fire station over there, and he made some excellent, strong coffee, which I really appreciated. But there's, if you saw, there was, unfortunately, representatives from the, from the Blues and Cape Verdean Festival were unable to attend, but we were able to go through a lot of things with the other event organizers, which really cleared the air and made sure that there were no issues leading into it, so I appreciated all the hard work on that. And, Mr., Chief Walsh, Mr. Evans, Mr. Buckminster, and I'm sure I'm, I'm missing somebody attending, I really appreciated their help. And I will stop, it's almost the nine o'clock hour.
I just wanted to make a quick mention, sorry to interrupt, that the different groups over the last year or so have been talking about trying to meet with the town, so they could sit there and discuss their events to make sure everything was settled ahead of time. It's very similar to what we do with some of the major building projects, so I'm glad everybody was able to get together and make this happen, because it makes life a lot simpler for everybody in the long run, it makes the events go smoother, and the town basically is more effective in how it works.
Mr. Menard, that's who I forgot, so...
Yes. All right, next up is liaison reports, Mr. Titlebaum.
No liaising was done.
No liaison was done. Mr. Slavin?
Oh, yes, here we go. It's okay, we've only got 12.
It's gonna be a long day?
Yeah, we'll be out by 10 o'clock. As I mentioned earlier, the CEC met on Monday, and they did approve the program with the town administrator, which was voted on. They also have a full list of everybody who has applied, everything was updated, and the total requests that they have is going to be $35,590. The amount of money maxed that they can get during a year under our special act that's sitting is $45,000, there should be no problem for them getting the money, obviously, well in advance of the June 30th, 2016. As a sidebar, I've been in touch with both Senator Pacheco's office and Representative Gifford's office. The Senate obviously does this first, and it's on the floor now, it finally got it moving to the point where, I'm hoping in a week, a week and a half, it should be done and over with, I'll keep everybody up to date as it goes, they hate hearing from me, but it's fun calling them three times a week and yelling at them. County road meeting was gonna be in June, SERPA had asked to push it back till July 8th, reason being, there's, they were under the gun to meet a bunch of state requirements for reports and everything, and the three communities, which is Rochester, Marion, and Wareham, agreed to put it back to the 8th to come up with some plan for that. Planning Board, of course, met on Bay Point, everybody's probably read it in the paper, there's some meetings going on, I believe, tomorrow with the engineer and our engineer to try and get some of the issues taken care of. No, actually, there's a meeting tomorrow, it's a regular meeting for the, for the Planning Board.
But the next one, next public hearing will be on the 20th?
Yes, continuation, the hearing has not been closed, but they're gonna try and get some of this done through the engineers. On buses, Gatra, I met with Frank Gay at the annual meeting last week, Frank has basically got a, virtually an agreement done for busing coming out of what will be the Wareham Station, Emerstis Way Bus Station, which they have funding for. I'm waiting for Mr. Bowen to give us the okay on our mass rail on the purchase of that property, giving us the revert clause, which he's not listening. And what it is, is he's got the initial agreement between Gatra and Serta for buses going from east to west, which would give us transportation from Wareham, basically into Dockmouth, Fairhaven, New Bedford, and Fall River. We're waiting just to get some details worked out with Marion and Matipoiset, which have no service whatsoever and haven't signed with anybody, so that has to be done. I don't know how long it's gonna take, but we'll keep after it, but they, they've made some real good progress, because initially the issue was, how do you take a bus service, a regional RTA, and have them go across into someone else's area? The way the state sets it up, it's virtually impossible, but they've come up with the, I believe, they're gonna be using Serta drivers to drive the buses when it goes over the line, so they've, they've come up with a hybrid, so, but it's, it's interesting to see that we're finally getting somewhere with that stuff. On the trash issue, everybody knows we've had the trash program that we've been doing it through five independent people, it's been getting better, although we keep having areas that stuff seems to come back no matter what we do. I did pick up some trash a couple days ago, and I actually have an envelope with a person's name who actually dumped the trash, so we'll be talking to them soon. We will be going out to all the businesses that have takeout, and the liquor stores, et cetera, and passing out signs. I stopped, actually, I believe it was Friday, went up to see the Dunkin' Donuts at their, for Wareham's, you know, franchise, I think it's Pimentel, and it was over, West Wareham on Cranberry Highway. I went up to talk to them, just explain to them that unfortunately, percentage of volume, they're, they're the highest offender of trash in our area, in actual volume. And I know they really try and do what they can, because if you go to their takeout windows, they have signs in every window, you know, please take care of your trash, et cetera. On the properties they own, they're clean. The problem is, is several of their properties, particularly one down here on Main Street, Wareham, they rent, and they pay a maintenance fee for the landowner to keep the place clean. A week ago, the trash was overflowing in the trash receptacles in that particular strip on Main Street, I believe they clean it up once a week, it's obviously not working, the Board of Health has come and talked to them. So they'll work with us any way they can, they're really concerned about it because it looks bad for them as well, it gives them a bad image, so it's not them just sitting there and dumping stuff out and not caring about it, they're actually trying to do something with it. Edenville Railroad, Thomas the Train, I have no clue what it is, I'm too old for it, I guess, but they have a brand-new ride set up, there's a bunch of rides based on Thomas the Train. We had a meeting on Thursday, talking about it, Gatra may or may not be able to provide train service out of, excuse me, bus service out of Wareham, to take people from here to those rides and back, we'll see what happens, they just started to talk about it. We've also talked to the Cape Flyer about promoting that on a Saturday and Sunday out of Boston, to see if there's some linkage there as well, to get some more action going on. Last piece of news, which to me is, I'm pretty happy with, after five years of trying to get Mr. Baker and his property on Lower Main Street, I've actually was able to make contact directly, and I sent him a basic proposal that the town would like to help him in developing the property, I'm hoping to hear back in a week to see where we are. So there's a possibility that finally, Lower Main Street can get off the ground and get going. That's it for me.
Ms. Whiteside, please.
Thank you. I don't think I'm the liaison to the police, but I just wanna say that I really appreciate everything that the officers are doing for the town. I had occasion to actually speak with the chief last week, I think. There's just, there's an enormous amount of work that is required when you are a police officer or any first responder, and I just wanna say thanks very much, guys and gals. The library, I read the hours, the new hours, starting July 7th. The Friends and the Foundation and the trustees are all trying to work very diligently together to make sure that the library grows in hours available to the public and services available to the public. They have put out, I'm not sure which group put it out, but a survey which says, you know, do you want a library or not, kind of basically, and anybody who answered the survey, of course, said, yeah, we want a library. In some of the research I've done, towns and cities are building what are called community centers that include a library and a council on aging and a visiting nurse, or, you know, whatever that kind of service may be. And I think that in the future, regionalization of many services may be the way to go. So that will be something that I will be exploring on my next tour of duty. No, I just wanna say, the Veterans Council makes me very proud to be a citizen of Wareham, they really went full out and did a great job for the town on Memorial Day. The Council on Aging is still looking for a few good men, again, and they really are actively trying to reach out to the seniors of the town and figure out what it is that they can help you with or us with, 'cause I'm a senior too, obviously. And, let's see, if you feel like having a nice evening out and watching some really good baseball, go to Spillane Field and watch the Wareham Gateman. I can name something like 30 players who started here at Spillane Field and ended up in the major leagues, so you may see somebody who's 6'8" walking down the street or eating breakfast in one of the local places, give them a high five, 'cause they're doing pretty well. I think that's it.
Okay. I met with the members, a couple of the members of CONCOM after our, our meeting last week, they were concerned, and I think rightfully so, that we may have been a little overyellous with how we handled what we said about that board in, in open session, and maybe even should apologize, and I think I'll apologize for what was said. We, we have confidence in that board, we have confidence in all our boards, that they can do what they need to do, and you need to know that, even when we have little arguments or little things that don't go the way that everybody likes to see them, we still have confidence in those boards. And I want you to know, at least from me, that I support you in what you're trying to do and what you're trying to get accomplished. And I think, I just wanted to try to, try to mend that fence a little bit, I think maybe we were a little overyellous, so... Next is, I plan on doing what's called an all-boards meeting in September, middle of September. But one of the things that's on Allen's original list is to formulate a direction for the board. So I guess, you know, I have that little list, and although nobody's volunteered to take anything off it, I think I'm gonna start to have to make assignments on that list so that everybody gets something off of it. But I think what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna try to put together, with the help of the board, a direction, you know, that the board wants to take us, where we wanna go and how we wanna get there. And then we'll have an all-boards meeting, we'll have time to discuss it, we'll get input from our boards, we'll get to meet with them, we'll get to have some coffee with them, we'll get to go through some stuff that, you know, we don't do maybe often enough, to let them know that we're here for them and support them, in getting the things accomplished that we need to get accomplished, 'cause after all, we couldn't get anything done if it wasn't for them. We really couldn't, and we need to support them and show the support, so. Sometime in the middle of September, I'm not sure the exact date, it'll be a Saturday, we'll meet Saturday morning at the cafeteria at the high school, and we'll have an all-boards meeting, we'll get all the boards there, and we'll be able to have some conversations. We did it before when I was a selectman years ago, and it worked out really well, and it really opened the lines of communications between the boards even a little better. Okay? Huh? Well, it's a Saturday, so we'll be able to handle it, we'll fit it in, don't worry about October town meeting, we'll get that stuff out of the way, too. The next thing, of course, I just wanna mention, the last thing about these signs that are out there. We're gonna get serious about these things. They're every place, they're on every telephone pole, they're on every corner, they're on every house, they're on everything. I mean, you would think that we are nothing but a commercial business from one end of this down to the other. Now, there are certain signs from charities and things of that nature that are promoting stuff that we allow to put out there, but there's no business that should have a sign on anybody's property, especially town property, that doesn't meet the requirements of the bylaw. None. It shouldn't be, we're trying to buy records, or we're trying to sell houses, or we're trying to do this, or real estate signs that aren't in front of the property themselves, there should be none of that. And we are gonna send that letter and get some people, you know, in charge here, or help to police this and get it done, and get them down, and we'll continue to take them down. And if you wanna keep putting them up, we'll keep taking them down, and if it costs you money, that's too bad. Because it, it just looks awful. I mean, I see, and they're all different colors, they're all different shapes, I mean, I don't know if you guys have seen this, every telephone pole has something stuck to it. Yeah, we always were out there, we were, I mean, you know, and the yard sales, that's the other thing, folks, if you have a yard sale, all right, but take your sign down when you're done. You know, take it down, it looks like lousy, fluorescent stuff up and down the street. You know, this is your community, don't you want it to look good? People are working hard to make that happen. Yes, Mr.?
That's right, we don't want it to look like podunk.
Huh?
Don't want it to look like podunk.
Podunk?
Podunk.
All right, I guess that's enough, I guess I've yapped enough.
Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, it's coming off of the, the highlight of the sign speech and such.
That's gonna, you're gonna be in a tough spot.
Yeah, it's a tough spot. There was something that's been, been brought up to me, and I'm in the Swiss Beach area, and I'm gonna reach out to the Swiss, Swiss Beach Improvement Association. We have people that are dumping their trash inside down into the porta-potties, and the company that we've contracted with is very, is near pulling out, and if they pull out, if they pull out, there's no more porta-johns, they're, they're not coming back. So this is, I think it's something we, I think probably the Swiss Beach Improvement Association is the best people to reach out and just alert them that this is happening, because the, the people are frustrated right now and already informing us, so let's, you know...
We have the same, same issue over at, on Oak Street at the Tempest Knot Boat Ramp, I've cleaned that up five times in the last two weeks like that. I'm not sticking my hand down the toilet anymore.
I hate to say that, but, you know, there's only like five people probably watch this meeting, but, you know, so we're only getting to five, so we need these guys out here, you guys from the press, we need you to write this stuff for us, we really do. We need you to spend the time and write this story, I know it's not glamorous and it's a lousy story, but it's an important story for the community, you could really help us a lot by making the point of this, so that everybody knows that, you know, we're gonna come after you for this stuff, you know, and that we don't want it in the porta-johns, and the people that come here wanna be able to use the porta-johns. Go ahead, Peter.
I'll give them a quotable, don't put your litter in the shitter.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm not sure they're gonna print that one, but whatever. All right, so anyway, let's, let's see if we can keep things going in the right direction, and we are meeting next week, we had to change the 30th meeting and cancel the 30th meeting, and the reason for that was, is that a lot of the board members are not gonna be around that day, so we're going to move it into next Tuesday, so we'll be meeting next Tuesday, and then we'll meet on the 7th of July, so that's sort of the next couple meetings, okay? Thank you so much, and could I have a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Slavin, seconded by Ms. Whiteside, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, thank you, Wareham.
Good night.